It is six o'clock and I call the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three City Commission Meeting to Order. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hassel.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Present.
Mayor, we have four Commissioners present. The quorum of three has met.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on the agenda is Commissioner's comments. Commissioners, do you have anything to share?
Just other than this is my last full meeting. At the next meeting on January second, I will be here for just the first few minutes as I fade out and turn it over to the newly elected four. We're going to swear in for take for the four newly elected Commissioners will take the oath of office. And so that's exciting and an official transition. And I'm looking forward to actually retiring again. So just those comments. Thank you.
A peaceful transition of power. It's something to see. So anybody else?
Yes, just want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Indeed.
All right. We'll move on to the next item, which is the Consent Agenda, which are items of a routine or housekeeping nature, or items that have been previously reviewed by the City Commission. Commissioner may, Commissioner may request an item be removed for separate discussion and considered immediately following the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, any questions, comments about the Consent Agenda items?
Just one, which is miscellaneous I four, at least with one of the entities or one of the landowners there, I helped out. It's kind of a go-between between the city and them as they look through this. So I'll be abstaining and recusing myself on that item.
Okay. All right. We will open the Consent Agenda up for public comments. If you would like to comment on any of the items on the Consent Agenda only, please come forward, tell us your name and address, sign in on the sheet here, and you'll have up to five minutes and we'll listen to your comments but not answer questions this time. Anybody? All right. We will close public comment on the Consent Agenda. Commissioners, is there a motion?
I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Second. All right. If you moved in seconded to approve the Consent Agenda, please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes, except abstain on I four.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with the exception of I four, which carries three to zero to one.
All right. Very good. We will move into the general agenda and our first item is to consider an amendment to Phase One Development Agreement Midtown and a Phase Two Development Agreement Handy Corner with the Midtown Land Company. Jason?
Evening, Mayor. Commissioners, as you mentioned, we have two agreements we're considering this evening along with a couple resolutions for IRBs. Just as an overview and a reminder, these are the two building areas that were identified by the developer along Laramie Street between Eleventh and North Manhattan Avenue. Building one was a result of an RFP process we did several years ago in which the city was looking to transition the surface parking to a structure type of development with a minimum investment of twenty million in that RFP. Building two is a private venture. It's a private piece of property that the developer has approached us with in terms of combining those this evening for discussion purposes. This gives you a little bit better visual of where Phase One of Midtown is located. As I mentioned, it was part of that RFP process we went through. And then Phase Two, which includes the hotel and the parking garage. This is very similar to the layout and the conversation the developer had with you about seven, eight weeks ago from this evening when we talked about the projects, tax increment finance, and since then, we have amended the TIF redevelopment plan for Aggieville. A key piece to that redevelopment plan was a feasibility study that was part of the December fifth and December twelfth action. I'll pull that up here in a minute just to remind you again where the developer felt like the revenues were going to come in through 2038, and then we can continue through the process and the agreements. Phase one is a redo of what we called Midtown Phase One. It, two sections that really changed. Section three, we previously had public projects agreed upon and under contract. If you recall, we had design contracts and first phase of a construction manager at risk with BHS to construct 12th Street and portion of Laramie between 12th Street and North Manhattan. 12th Street construction was anticipated from Morrow to Laramie. We had a design where it split the block. We were looking at a pedestrian zone south of the alley to Laramie Street. But we had the public projects, they were all agreed to, had the contracts agreed to, and this delay has now caused us to need amendments to those agreements. So we've included, included language in here, excuse me, for the need to finalize that design and amend those contracts by June 30, 2024. So those will come back before future governing bodies as we get those ironed out with those details. Section eight talks about the developer commencing construction on Midtown Phase One by June 1, 2024, with that completion date no later than January 1, 2026. Their desire to modify those, consistent with our desire, we did not want the developer to be out of compliance as we enter into a construction phase and felt like those dates needed to be adjusted this evening along with Phase Two consideration in order to keep the developer in compliance and in a place where we can move forward collectively. That'll allow him to leverage the financing. He can elaborate on this if he'd like him to, but that's the reason why we got into the Phase One Amendment tonight. Phase Two agreement is for the east side of 12th Street. Final design would be due to the commission prior to starting construction. I would anticipate that obviously before the June date at which he's supposed to start. That'll include, again, both the private projects and the public improvements. They'd really like us to work through the 12th Street, the alleys, Laramie, that construction sequencing, and we will be reaching out to those consultants and construction firms at the conclusion of tonight's meeting if this passes. That timeline obviously would start sometime in September and then complete by 2026. This is Phase Two, so it's a little bit of a few-month delay from Phase One, but completing at the same time. So the developer agrees to build a parking garage and he's also agreed to an easement that would cover roughly half of that parking garage. So he's proposed a 500-stall garage to this point. It'd be roughly 250 stalls, which would have a public easement across them, and those stalls would remain in that public easement through 2038 at no cost to the city. Incentives include capturing tax increment finance from both sites, the Midtown and the Handy Corner. The Midtown is probably the most sensitive of the negotiations. When we originally did Phase One, Midtown property taxes were forecasted anywhere between 750,000 and a million dollars a year, and that was going to be a revenue stream the city would be able to capture and pledge towards the parking garage at the corner of North Manhattan and Laramie. That garage is open now. It's been open for some time. That million roughly annually in revenue from the Midtown on property taxes in this contract would also remain with the city. We'll be able to use that towards that parking garage and other public infrastructure in the event revenues exceed the costs associated with the garage. The revenue from the Midtown that is eligible under Phase Two would be the sales tax and the transient guest tax that would be generated from the Midtown property. We are not capturing sales tax from anywhere else in the district for TIF purposes. Those are any, if anybody's generating more sales tax or any sales tax whatsoever in the Aggieville TIF, those continue to come straight to the city, and they're not part of what the state would separate and send to us as a TIF revenue. Just as a reminder, these two properties are the only two that we will talk about when it comes to sales tax and transient guest tax. No other hotel, no other property are included in that TIF amendment, nor are they included in this Phase Two agreement. The Handy Corner does include property taxes. It's the increment that's going to be generated. It is not all the property taxes. There was about, TJ may know the number, I think it was about a million and a half to $2 million worth of property there in 2019 when we established the district. That revenue will continue to be coming into the, the base will obviously go to the school district, county, and the city. Any increment between that time period would come to the city, but anything over that value would be carved off for the Handy Corner and for the parking garage construction. All revenues generated through these incentives are dedicated towards the construction of that parking garage. Just to elaborate a little bit on that, and I'll pull up the feasibility study here just to highlight some of those anticipated revenue streams. And again, these were estimates that were put together from the developer and their team. When they looked at revenue streams 2038, 2023 through 2038, most of them starting in 2026, we're looking at that Phase One retail taxable sales, Phase Two hotel, those taxable sales, that total taxable, and then the sales tax that would be generated from those sales. You've got the transient guest tax roughly at seven and a half percent of their anticipated taxable sales, generating anywhere from, you know, 168,000 in the first year through 419. So TGT total of about 4.6, 4.7 million. You're looking at a sales tax total of about 2.7 million dollars in those revenue streams coming in. The assumptions down at the bottom are similar to what we've done with other TIF projects. They're just kind of showing you where the entry, the sales tax rates and the transient guest tax rates are. And then they built in their own formulas for out years in sales. I wanted to bring that to your attention just as it pertains to the document itself and the incentives. There are limitations. The garage itself is forecasted from a construction standpoint of what they have left of about 20 million dollars, but they anticipate with soft costs of around 25 million. They have forecasted that total debt service at just right around 48, 49 million. So of the 48, 49 million in total cost to construct the garage and debt services, they have also forecasted 16 million dollars in total TIF revenue through 2038. So if it costs 48 million dollars to build the entire 500-stall garage, 250 stalls is going to be roughly half of that. So 24 million would be the cost of the public parking garage stalls. Their total revenue estimates, which I'm sure there are people in the room that feel like those are aggressive, are 16 million dollars. So the revenues themselves through 2038 won't even reimburse the developer for the public 250 stalls in the garage. We are truly using the increment for the public parking garage. Now, if they exceed 16 million dollars, they got to exceed 28, 24 million dollars to get past the public side. Is the private side eligible? Yeah, it is, but they would have to generate that much revenue through 2038. I just want to make sure we're clear on the revenues, what they're eligible for. They're not eligible for any costs associated with the construction of the hotel. They're not eligible for any costs associated with the construction of Midtown. They're only eligible for the costs associated with the construction of that parking garage. And that's what we've carved out, and that's what we've highlighted in this agreement. The additional incentives is industrial revenue bonds, and they come in two forms, Midtown Phase One, Midtown Phase Two. Phase One has roughly 40 million dollars left in construction. The developer can talk to you about how much they've invested up until this point and how much isn't eligible for a construction cost where sales tax exemption may be applied. But that's the value we were given from the developer. The Handy Corner, which comprises both the hotel and the parking garage, would be another 40 million. So when you see the two resolutions, they both reflect a 40 million dollar value. That sales tax exemption only applies towards those construction materials that normally would have charged that 9.15%. Timeline before you this evening, obviously you've been through a lot in terms of just updates and, and overviews by the developer and by city staff. December 5th and 12th, as I mentioned, he passed the TIF redevelopment plan. Prior to June of 2024, that next commission is going to deal with those final designs, and those obviously are written in a way where we have to be reasonable, as well as the developer has to be reasonable in terms of those designs and what we expect. There are design guidelines in place for Aggieville. They've applied to everything that's been built so far. It'll apply to this. And our city public projects will have to be contemplated by the next commission as well, amending potentially those contracts with Olson and BHS for that construction of 12th Street, the alleys on either side, and Laramie between Eleventh and North Manhattan Avenue. We will likely throw in design of 12th Street extending down to Fremont. Fremont will start construction in February from 12th Street West, and it'll continue under construction all the way through 14th Street with a likely completion late summer of 2024. So just about the time we're finishing up Fremont, they'll start wanting to occupy space for Midtown One and Midtown Two. Happy to answer any questions this evening. I know the developer is here. TJ does have a presentation he'd like to share with you all. I'm open for questions now, or I can take those later. It's up to you.
All right. Any questions for Jason as of this minute?
I just want to ask one, you know, because the Mercury Head twice this week said we sold the parking lot to Back Nine for $1. So could you clarify that again?
Yeah.
I don't understand why. I guess if they publish it enough times, people will believe it.
Yeah, there were, there were a few clarifications that I think we've touched on a lot of them already in the conversation tonight, but we obviously went out for an RFP looking for proposals. We were looking for minimum investments, like I said earlier, and that minimum investment was anticipated to generate annual revenue. That annual revenue is something with the TIF in place, we get to capture it 100% because there was no value on the property previously. So by getting a project like Midtown built and on the tax rolls, the city benefits through 2038 at 100% of what the mill levy is on that property. We anticipate that'll be a million dollars a year. We anticipated at the time it would start in 2025 and run through 2038. That's a 13 million dollar return on transferring a piece of property that previously had 85 parking stalls on it. So we can go build a 500-stall garage about a block away with the same money.
And then there was another component to that, though? A little clawback?
Oh, sure. If Midtown doesn't follow through with the agreements and the plans, they owed the city, I believe, 2.6 million, 2.5, somewhere around there.
Yeah, but there wasn't any document that said we're transferring this land for $1.
There may have been a document and a deed that suggested the transfer was for a dollar. The agreements we had with the, with the developers suggest different.
Okay. I just think that that needs to be clarified. It's just, I guess, just something that irritates me.
I think any deed that's recorded has to have a purchase price. I'm sure for, it was a reference more of a nominal amount for a dollar.
All right. Well, why don't we go ahead and have the developer come up and do his presentation, and then we'll have some questions and comments after that.
Hi, I'm TJ Vilkanskas representing Back Nine and Midtown Land Company today. To address that last statement or Commissioner Butler's comment, we recently had an article written on Royal Towers, which was another property we recently bought, and they also documented that we bought that for a dollar or two because every deed says a dollar for the most part on it. So it depends on where you get the information, but it's not always exactly accurate on what things are being purchased for. I'm going to go through this really quickly. You've all heard this many times. If you need to stop me, please do so. Just as a reminder, we are trying to get the, the first building under construction as quickly as we can without changing many of the details. The idea and the reason we work with the city is to generate as much property tax revenue as we can. I will say, I think we are already generating revenue for the TIF right now based on the taxes we just paid because there wasn't a significant appreciation of that area because of the private parking lot that we bought as part of that, and then that got replatted. So we are already generating money for the TIF right now today on this piece of property. But the building as it's designed is going to have roughly 60,000 square feet of office space, 26,000 square feet of retail. We're going to give ourselves the option to have 23,000 square feet of residential on the top floor. That's one change we had to reduce some exposure to office space. Obviously, in a perfect world, I would like to see it be all office space because I think the need to create jobs is, is huge in this community, and the more office space we have there, the more opportunity we have to create jobs. So we'll see how that goes. I mean, obviously, a big component of it and part of the RFP is a lot of public space that can be used, and there is a whole outdoor courtyard area that remains intact from our original conversation, the original RFP.
TJ, could you either bring the microphones closer to the center or stay in front of one of them so we can hear you better?
Yeah, sorry about that.
It's okay.
The, the Handy Corner piece, which is the piece across the street, which has never been owned by the city, it's a piece of property that we bought privately. As Jason alluded to, the design behind it is to be a 108-room hotel and roughly, I think it's like 516 parking stalls right now that we're looking at, but around that 500 mark as we're working with the same designer, Walker and Olson, that worked on the existing new garage in Aggieville there. We have, just so everybody's aware, we have signed agreements with the Hilton organization for this to be a Hampton by Hilton. We've hired Lodging One to be the manager of the hotel. That's what they do professionally, and we've moved forward with Base Four to be the architect, and they're actively working on this, and we're getting closer. They basically spend most of their time designing hotels. I just wanted everybody to know where we were in that process and that there are agreements in place that we have provided to the city. I really like this map just to show it and, and talk about the district as a whole because it shows our, what I'll call, three projects there. If you look at the top of the screen up here, the Aggieville Vision Plan was designed or put into place when we were building the 12B apartments over here, and then as we were building Avenue M, it kind of all started with the, the Blument, and then from there we moved over and the courtyard was done and the city parking garage was done. But to highlight, you know, one of the main reasons, one of the main things we were trying to do is stay consistent with the vision plan that so many people spent so much time with in the past. And, you know, some of those things that are, that are described, especially on pages 25 and 26 of that plan as it relates to the Laramie Corridor, is the desire for up to five-story mixed-use buildings. It discusses the redevelopment of city-owned lots into mixed-use buildings, and it also specifically spells out the need for, to address parking through a private-public relationship. And that's exactly what we're here today to try to create, is that private-public relationship for the garage. One thing we liked actually better about this than the original plan is it spaces the parking garage further away from the existing parking garage, and so it's going to better serve the district, we think, on this far side of Aggieville as opposed to if we had it here or here or someplace else. It's just a nice distance between to make sure that we're servicing all of the businesses in Aggieville. You know, timeline, I won't, Jason did a good job of hitting all those, so I'm not going to bore you with all those details that are actively spelled out in the development agreement, but if anybody does have any questions, happy to answer those. You know, our request, once again, this is me just basically repeating what Jason had just said, there are a couple things I want to make sure I point out, and Jason talked about it a little bit, but funds that are reimbursed to us can only be used for documented expenses related to the construction of the parking garage, and those are detailed in detail in the development agreement. So the funds that we would potentially be reimbursed for cannot go towards our hotel. They cannot go towards our mixed-use building. They have to be specifically used towards the construction of public infrastructure as dictated by the TIF. So I want to make sure I hit on that. This is for public infrastructure piece, and, and Jason talked well about the breakdown of costs for that and about how, you know, we're really never going to get to half the cost of our garage, no matter how well we perform. I mean, I just think that's an important piece. I also like this type of reimbursement because it's a use-based tax, right? Like, we're asking for reimbursement from, from sales tax and transient guest tax that are so, and property tax that's associated specifically with our buildings. If you don't go down to Aggieville, you don't use this hotel, you don't have any tax dollars that are getting, that are, that are helping pay for any of this. So the people that are using the properties, that are using the buildings, are the ones that are helping provide the dollars that could potentially come to us as an incentive, as a reimbursement. From the city's perspective, you know, we are not requesting any upfront funds whatsoever. We're taking on 100% of the risk. We're putting up 100% of the money in this situation. We win if we create a great product that people want to use. That's our upside, right? It encourages us to go out there and create a product that everybody in this community and people coming in from outside of our community can use. The TGT a little bit, I wanted to comment on that. That was probably, that brought up the most discussion as we've been talking through this over the last few months or so. You know, transient guest tax by design is there to support tourism, and, you know, we believe that the money that's coming from the TGT is supporting public infrastructure in a garage that provides parking for people that are going to use a hotel, that are going to go and eat dinner, are going to go to the oldest shopping district in the state of Kansas. To me, this is definition of what is supporting tourism. And then on the back end of that, the amount of funds it's going to generate for the TGT in 2039, I feel strongly it would be really hard to say, well, don't use it for that unless you have another plan for how you're going to raise 400 to 500,000 dollars that goes into TGT on the back end of the project. So I just wanted to comment a little bit about that. Commissioner Butler had some really good points on using a CID and some other things like that, and I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that I appreciated those points. We did look in to doing something along those lines. The benefit that we would be able to generate from a CID would be, had a fairly significant disadvantage to what the TGT would be, and we're already short the funds that would be paying for that 50% of public infrastructure, of public stalls. So we prefer to go the TGT route, but I do think it's important to highlight that, you know, comments that are made here are taken to heart, and we do explore them, and we do appreciate those, those types of comments. You know, and this is, this is the last page, and I'll open it up for questions. I just, you know, I wanted to highlight some of the things, you know. Our incentives are reimbursement-based. You know, we have to build it. We have to create the product for us to get any benefits from this. From a city's perspective, us getting this project going again gets us moving faster towards generating that revenue for the TIF from what the original first phase was. You know, I put on here 800,000 annually. That's all over the board. It just depends on, on how the county assesses it and some of those sorts of things. But, you know, we want to get that thing built. we want to get that thing built and operable and have that revenue going right into the TIF as soon as possible. So that's a benefit from the get-go. All of the tax revenue that we will generate for this area will revert back to the City of Manhattan in 2039. So all of that revenue that we are trying to create and build and invest in this area does come back to the City of Manhattan, and we have estimated it at roughly $2.5 million per year that kind of these two blocks would generate for the city. Conversely, if we didn't move forward with it, sold the land, and somebody tried to do a residential component on the whole thing, you know, doing some math, I can show you the breakdown works, but it's probably in the neighborhood of $500,000 to $600,000 a year. So the commercial aspect of this is significant and a significant benefit to us as a city. You know, a 500-plus stall garage that we're fronting, you know, without any costs to the city, no bonds being issued, nothing along those lines. And the other piece we don't really talk about, and I don't know the financials of what the existing parking garage is doing. This may be minimal, but the city still has the opportunity to generate revenue from the 50% of the stalls that they would, they would control. And then, you know, with the office building, some other things, we're looking at generating, you know, 400-plus jobs in Aggieville, which put 400-plus jobs in that district from eight to five, Monday through Friday, that feeds the district in a time period in which it's not actively used. I consider that a positive. 108 hotel rooms, you know, and we're spending, it's going to be over $100 million that we're going to spend privately to get this thing where it needs to be in 2026. So we're making a significant private investment into Aggieville, which we are big believers in. And we're trying to take that original Aggieville Vision Plan, which I believe was created in 2017, and help move it forward to see it come to life there. And the sooner we can do that, the better we can use the TIF, and I think it's a benefit for everybody. Any questions? I know I went through that kind of fast, but I know you have a lot of things on your agenda tonight, too, so happy to address anything.
So the people that say, well, we don't need another hotel A in Manhattan and B in Aggieville. Do the Hilton people know anything about marketing a hotel, or what makes them think that, obviously, they think that there's a demand and a need, and it's going to be a good idea. What's their perspective, or what's your perspective?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that question. I know there's some gentlemen in the audience tonight that know a lot about hotels, but we hired Lodging One because they're in that business. I'm not personally in that business. They reached out to, you know, a lot of different organizations. We got positive feedback from every single hotel flag that we reached out about being in this area, in this district. We chose Hilton because we wanted to go with a Hampton model. Quite frankly, it just hits a nice mix, and it's one of the best-performing hotel flags that was available to us to use, and that's why we went in that direction. But we did not have any issue finding an organization to partner with, whether it be Hilton, or there's a number of other ones that we could discuss, but we were really happy with the feedback we got. And the reason I did bring that up is I wanted everybody to know, we already have a signed contract with Hilton. Hampton, you know, they rebranded this year, so if you watch TV, you see Hampton by Hilton all over the place. That was another reason we wanted to go that route because we knew about their rebrand. It's no longer Hampton Inn. It's Hampton by Hilton, and they're leaning into that Hilton name, and so we were excited about that, too. But yeah, thanks for that question.
All right. Any questions for the developer? All right. Well, thank you. Stay close by, and we will open this up for a public comment. You'll have, please come forward, sign your name on the thing, state your name and address or who you're with, and you have up to five minutes. We'll take your comments under advisement.
Mayor Commissioners, my name is Mike Matson. I am the Director of External Affairs for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. I live at 3031 Sunnyside Drive, and we're here to support the Midtown Project. But before I do that, I want to echo Commissioner Morse's comments and Mayor Hattasal's comments about our organization's gratitude for your service. A lot of people who say that public service is a thankless job, but on behalf of our organization and my colleagues who are here tonight and the greater community, we appreciate your service, and we realize this is your last formal meeting, so we wanted to get that on the record. Thank you. We at the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce support this Midtown Development Project in Aggieville. The Chamber Board believes that the project will lead to exciting new development. It will lead to more visitors to Aggieville, new revenue streams for the city, a new parking garage that will help solve what we believe is a chronic Aggieville parking challenge. The Midtown Project will feature 100,000 square feet of fully customizable retail, office, and residential space. That TJ pointed out to you, there'll be an outdoor terrace, onsite restaurants, controlled and secure access, the hotel, the parking garage, and superior amenities. As you know, Back Nine Development is leading the project, and they are proposing two private redevelopment projects located within the Aggieville TIF District. Midtown is designed to integrate into the urban fabric of Aggieville. It honors Aggieville's history while looking toward its future. We believe, at the Chamber, that Midtown will bring an eclectic vibrancy, diversity, and excitement to Aggieville that is uniquely Manhattan. However, even more importantly, we believe that the funds generated from the mixed-use building will be put back into Aggieville to help complete the original Aggieville vision, as TJ mentioned, in a timelier manner than would have happened without this project. The Midtown Project will add to the economic vibrancy of Aggieville District in terms of jobs, visitors, parking, and business customers, and the Chamber is proud to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else?
Start it. Good evening. Again, thank you for your service. Appreciate those that have been with the city for a while. Enjoy your retirement. On this project, I personally am not objecting to the development. What's that? Oh, Brad Everett, Hilton Garden Inn. I lived down there more times than at home, but that's who I am. Also an owner of Fairfield Inn. I don't stand objecting to capitalism, the ability to go ahead and put a business in. My concern is transient tax that's used for tourism to go ahead and draw people in. The Convention Center is an example, is the sizzle or the means which we bring tourists to this community. The Hilton benefits from that, as with the Fairfield Inn, the Holiday Express, and others within this community. Using transient tax to build a parking garage, I'm not sure if Marsh is going to go ahead and make a brewery sure for it, but a garage is not in that setting. It uses have the hotel, is not going to go ahead and be the sizzle like a convention center. So my driving point on this is to go ahead and simply have a hotel and using it as the means and the district itself. The district already has a parking garage that's been built. That was one of the things that they went in and leaned on, saying that they did have a parking issue. Midtown is something that obviously needs additional parking. I don't have a problem with that. This should be an economic development TIF and a sales tax initiative. Our transient tax is to go ahead and bring people in. Parking garage is not. So I would ask that you go ahead and look for other revenue sources. I looked at their forecast, and when you have another hotel that's coming in at K-State, they're not going to achieve the numbers. It's their money. They can do what they want with it. They can put up whatever they like. The Fairfield Inn, which has more rooms, does not reach that level. So we're budgeting down next year. We have 135 rooms, and that includes occupancy. So my sense is that this property, even though it's going to be built another year and a half or so, is not going to go ahead and have the projections that they're so easily presenting as a revenue source. Again, don't stand opposed to it, but the transient tax needs to be used as we have for the Discovery Center and other things. We even used it out by the airport was for the, if I understand, the tower. But, and now we're using the transient tax instead for the Discovery Center. It's going out for ball fields. I'd rather we just go ahead. We still have other needs with the Tourism CVB that wants to go and expand it. We are going to be during this time through 2038, all the hotels in the region are going to be using our transient tax to underwrite and promote through the CVB that hotel. They're not putting a single dime in towards the transient pool of dollars that we have. So again, if we're going to use it, let's go ahead and put it back in the pool that's intended to and use it to bring people in, and a garage is not the way to go ahead and handle it. Thank you.
Next, Speaker?
Hi there. My name is Colin Noble, and I live in the Holiday Inn at the campus where I've lived for about 30 years, or more, actually, which means I've been in the hotel business in this part of the world for 30 or more years. And I have three hotels in town, as you know, and I pay an awful lot of tax to that transient guest tax, by far the biggest in town. And like Brad, I think Brad spoke very, very well there, I'm not against this some guy putting his money into something, but I am against discrimination. And if he gets a benefit from not paying his tax into the transient guest tax, but somehow or other it's massaged into this new building for his, you know, for, obviously, for his benefit, otherwise he wouldn't do it. That's not fair. That's not straight way that fellows play games. I have no idea how he's going to get 400 people benefiting out of that hotel. It's just crazy talk. I've been here a day or two guys. I know about them. I also see another thing. If the rest of us are paying into the transient guest tax, it's to bring business into Manhattan. But if that hotel is not paying into the pool of tax, does that mean that they shouldn't benefit from what, you know, the people who from the CVB go all over the place to try to bring business in? Is it fair that it's just shared amongst all the hotels, or if one hotel's not paying into the kitty, should they enjoy the full benefits of that? That wouldn't be fair either. As I say, I'm not against him doing it. Good luck to him doing it. He will also know that, if he's looked into all this, he will know that a few years ago, I think about eight or more years ago, the CVB got a group to come, they were commissioned to come and survey Manhattan and see what would be good to help Manhattan grow. And they came back and said, whatever you do, don't build any more rooms. Build things that are attractions that are going to bring people into this town. Well, they did another one about a year ago, as you probably know, and guess what? Exactly the same thing. Don't build any more hotels. You've got more hotels than you need. Bring in attractions. That's what's going to bring it in. As you know, the occupancy this year, at the start of the year, was up. Since then, as Brad's mentioned, they're not budgeting up, and my hotels aren't budgeting to be as good as this current year. It isn't there. The occupancy is going to end up this year about 60 or 61% in that. And that's a good year. There are many years coming in where it's in the late 58, 59, 60. And guys, you can't make money. You can't do things unless you get a minimum of 65 to 70. And we are in the low 60s. To bring another hotel, and the university might bring others, and they're bringing something, and sure you'll get guys that want to come in here and look at this, to bring their hotels here. Sure they do. Those are salesmen. Their job is to get people to look at their hotel. It was a Hampton, a Hilton Hampton where it was before, and it was, as you know, burned down, and they got a fistful of dollars for the fire. I understand all that. But you would wonder then, if he's got the Hilton and the Hampton name behind him, why did he not rebuild? If it's a good idea, rebuild. Well, he hasn't done anything. He's, in fact, he's put the money in his pocket, and he's gone. I'm talking about 400 things and so on. Good for him. I have no idea how that would be done. And I've lived here a long time, and I've played in this pool and this game for a long time. The main thing that I'm objecting to here is fair play and no discrimination because we are being discriminated. If we get, if he gets the benefit to building or assisting or involved in the, that parking garage, no matter what way you multiply or divide it, there's assistance he's got. Otherwise, he wouldn't do it. Why would he do that and not contribute to the bed tax? I don't understand that this has even been thought about. It, from a point of view of business, it's crazy, and he'll have a mortgage in that. I have a mortgage on my properties, and I want, I want to pay my mortgage. I've paid it every minute, every day since I came here. But he's got to pay his mortgage, too. And the, but that's his business. You know, if he doesn't make it and so on, that's fine.
Okay. Your time's up. Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Good evening. Dennis Cook, 1125 Moore with Aggieville Business Association. First off, you know, for the people who are not going to be around next year on this, appreciate everything you've done, and hopefully we'll see you New Year's Eve, too. Just to, you 've heard me talk about this before, you know, about the Aggieville Business Association Board of Directors unanimously voted to be in support of this. Maybe something we haven't talked about is this is, this is the biggest opportunity for Aggieville since 89, 1889. You know, so this is a big deal, and we're not going to, and deals like this don't come around very often, where somebody can come in and transform a big piece of property that really needs some help. And when we talk about all the things that we're, that's possible with this, whether it's more jobs, people down there all the time, you know, there's just so many things that it benefits Aggieville that we do want to show you that we are in total support. You know, my background, my whole life was in business, and one of the things that I learned from a couple of great business people, you know, Dean Campbell and Terry Dow and Casey Mizada with the beer business, is you don't just turn down something just because you haven't done it before. The idea is, let's take a look at that. You know, we've never done that, but that doesn't mean we shouldn't think about it. And the things that Back Nine is talking about, you know, yeah, it's different, and the way to structure it is a little bit different, but think about what the repercussion is if you turn that down. You know, it's, you know, those opportunities will never come back around like that again. So we are in total support. I think the extra parking on the east side is vital to Aggieville. What we've seen with the public parking garage on the west end is fine, but it's really on the west end, and there's just a lot of people who don't want to go two blocks. And so the idea of, you know, what we really missed out is, is that parking there at 12th Street, that was a public parking lot, kind of really fed a different group of people, and so we really need to get that parking back. So the sooner the better. That'd be my vote. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dennis. Anybody else?
I just, I wanted to address a couple of the points that were made here real quickly. One of the gentlemen alluded to us not hitting our numbers. And that's the beauty of what we're proposing, because if we don't hit our numbers, there's no penalty to the city. The only person that's hurt in that situation based on our request is, is us, right? So, you know, if our numbers are off and we don't hit our numbers, you know, the city is not tied to anything there. Our reimbursement is only based on, on what we produce. I also wanted to make sure that I highlighted that we're not, we're, we're still paying into the T G T. We're not not paying into it. And we'll continue to pay into the T G T long after the TIF expires. This reimbursement only runs through the time period in which the TIF is in place. And then all those T G T funds then go back to the city and, and back to tourism. If there's a better plan to generate the kind of revenue for that in that time period that I'm not aware of, then great. But we think that this is a pretty good investment into something that will generate, you know, we estimated four to five hundred thousand a year based on our estimates. Maybe our estimates are high. Maybe they're aggressive. Like I said, the only person that's hurt is us. So let's say it's only three hundred thousand a year to T G T. That's still a pretty good deal. That's going towards that. The parking, we need the parking. We're putting an office building and we're going to try to generate four hundred plus jobs, some residential space. Aggieville's going to be growing. We got hotel rooms that are going in there. We need the parking. I would much prefer give the land to the city of Manhattan and have them build a garage and own the garage and control the garage. But the reality of the situation we're in right now is frankly, we, we don't have the funds, nor could we meet the timeline to keep up with the, the property we're trying to put in place. So it hits the TIF as soon as it can. So, you know, there's been other hotels in the area where the city has participated with convention centers, with parking garages, and, and they paid for a lot of that stuff. We're not asking for the city to pay for any of that stuff. We're fronting all the money up front. We're just asking that the city participates with, with the reimbursement. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of those points and make sure I addressed those.
All right. Anybody else?
Joyce Bright, twelve seventeen Colorado. And I have some concerns about the, the project. I'm, I'm the type of person who thinks about details that a lot of people don't think. As someone who's still recovering from foot surgery, I'm concerned about handicap parking and the availability, especially during the construction phase. I recently had a, an appointment in Aggieville and had to park there. And it was hard. I was like, okay, where are the handicap parked? First one's taken, second one's taken. Finally found one. And it was hard to get. And it's difficult to find handicap spots in Aggieville that are street level. And a parking garage would not provide those. You know, you can't just park in the garage and then have to walk another block or two. That doesn't work. And also concerned where the construct, during the construction phase, where the workers would park, construction workers would park, who are building these, where would they park? They're starting to park in the, if you, the Art and Light Museum downtown. They're parking in the mall parking lot. You know, you go past there every day, you see, and they're starting to go over into the, the parking lot where the Art Deco building is next door to it. And so they're using spots that could be used by, you know, shoppers or people working there. And so that is a concern for me, parking. And right now, we have unrented space in Aggieville. The new building that was just built, it's at, I think Fourteenth and Laramie, the one with the lime green trim. There's unrented office space there. So, so it's kind of, why are we building more that is, when this is not rented? And there are other unrented office space units around town. You go downtown and, you know, out on Anderson, other spaces. You know, is there, why is there a need to build even more office space when what we have is not being used right now? And hotel, not enthusiastic about having another hotel. People say, oh, well, we need one. Do we really? And so the garage, I think, having the park, I'm skeptical about whether we need a parking garage, especially in Aggieville. Everybody says we need it. Especially, you may be surprised to learn that when I lived in Wichita, I worked at a place where we had an employee parking garage. So I parked in a garage five days a week for five years. And so anyways, the garage, it was maintained and, you know, we didn't have trouble, you know, so much trouble. Employees tend to take care of their own space because we're using it. And it was taken care of, and we had security officers. What kind of maintenance and security would we have in this garage? Who is handling? I know that's kind of thinking down the road, but we, you have to consider that. Now, I am not opposed to having something built in Aggieville, but a hotel may not be the best option. I'm looking at things that, I would prefer something that, options for people where they don't have to stay overnight when they come to Manhattan, that they can make a day trip here. They can do shopping, have, you know, eat at restaurants and have other options available. I think this would be, that would be a good fit for, for Aggieville and other places. We don't, building another hotel, okay, they've got a place to stay, but there's nothing, there's not much for local people. You can, you can say the, make the jobs argument, but not everybody's going to work in a hotel, or they're not able to, or they don't want to. But they need a full-time job. Start the call phone. Anyway, those are some of my concerns, but they're, it just, you know, it's kind of, I do appreciate you considering this and considering the options we have. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Vern?
Yeah. Vern Hendrix, thirty-five oh eight, Vanessa Drive, Manhattan. This project gives me nothing but excitement. When I came back to Manhattan in ninety-seven after graduating here and left town, I felt like I moved back in time ten years from coming from Ames, Iowa. The idea that we've had the development down at South End, we've had the Discovery Center, we've got the Edge Town, this is what brings people to town and it's exciting. It's, it's hard to understand what people outside communities think of us. We think of, we talk to ourselves and our own community citizens, and we kind of like the things the way it is, and we don't want a whole lot of traffic. I've heard so many conversations about it's great when the students go home because we don't have to worry about the traffic. It flows down. This town is for the future of our kids. The, the joy of this for me is we have a young developer getting excited about something like this. I've been here since nineteen ninety-seven, and there's been a lot of hotels go up since nineteen ninety-seven. The only one that's out of business is one that burnt down. Somehow, the rest of them stay in business, and somehow this town continues to grow. Somehow, the economics happen. I, I get concerned, even through the Community Foundation, we've grown significantly. We're getting involved in a lot of things. We're here to help a lot of people. I get concerned a lot of times when we, we're so fearful about making things happen. Where's the confidence that we have as educated business leaders in this community? Where's the confidence that we have of citizens that want to take care of our kids, our grandkids and their kids? Where's the confidence of the chamber who works with business developers all the time? Are we, are we losing, are these wasted positions in our community that we're not listening to them and the advice that they're giving? You know, let's get excited about a project and let's make it happen. That is an old area that we spent a lot of money to talk to a lot of people, to listen to a lot of consultants, tell us what we've got here, and we've got somebody that wants to do it. So from my standpoint, let's rock and roll and get it done. And thank the two of you for your service. And Ron, thank you for your many, many years of service. God bless you.
Thank you. Anybody else? You can only speak one time, Colin. Sorry. Have some, tell somebody else what you're going to say and send them up. All right. Anybody else? You get, all right. We'll go ahead and, and close public comment here. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the developer or for Jason? Go ahead.
Yeah, I've got one. You know, it seems like the, the tripping stone here is the transient guest tax. Everybody seems to think all this is fine. So, you know, when I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, looking at CID, I understand that's not going to bring in seven point five percent. But what I'm interested in is, it's basically sixteen million dollars we're talking about, three hundred thousand a year. So what other revenue streams can we use? Because I agree with Vern. We know, we need to make this thing happen. But can we make it happen without using transient guest tax? And I believe we can. You know, we may have to dip into economic development funds, as, as Brad mentioned, but again, i- if you look at that timeline, we're talking, what, three hundred thousand dollars a year or so? And, and there's some logical arguments there that if the C V B's marketing everybody, then everybody should be paying into the funds. So, so my, my question is, you know, fine, we use the property tax, we use the sales tax, but is there other revenue streams that we can replace the transient guest tax with? And then I think that will solve the problem. And we'll have a, you know, probably the whole community can, come behind this thing. That's, that's where my thought process is right now.
I'll just give my little two cents. I'm actually comfortable with the transient guest tax being used at us. It's part of the district. It's just the money that's coming out of the district. It's not enough to pay for the public parking that we're talking about putting in. So it's not comparable to say that another hotel is having to pay for their parking and this hotel isn't. The other thing is, seems to be, well, some argue against it, that we need parking down in that area of town. And what do we want to build up in that area of town? Retail, entertainment, restaurants? Those are going to need places to park and to be conducive to people to come down there. We need that parking garage. That's why in the vision we had to put in the parking garage. Our problem was finding a way to pay for it. And this does find us a way to pay for it. And it uses the money generated within that district to do it. So it's not going to raise anybody else's taxes. You know, we've had some arguments. Do we need hotels? Whether it's a good business decision? Should we have, you know, more office space? But, you know, we have the Chamber of Commerce, our business leaders here who are supporting the idea. And we have the district that is also supporting the idea. The other thing is, and I appreciate what Vern said, and I'm well behind him in that, the other thing is we need to get, get going. It's been suffering in Aggieville from all that's been happening down there in the construction. I'm sure it's not going to be fun when this construction starts up either. But the sooner we get going, the sooner we can get finished, and the sooner we can start, you know, getting rid of those issues, and the sooner we can start recruiting more entertainment venues, more restaurants, more everyone else to come down to Aggieville and get it going again. So, you know, I don't want to, you know, complicate it by trying to go to some other revenue streams. This tax has been used to help out with other developments around town, just like it can do with, with this one. And it's also self-contained, and the money's only coming when the money's generated from that district. Go ahead, finish answering words you were going to.
So I just, there's an annual process for the use of those T G T funds that comes before you all as a governing body. Historically, the C V B has requested sixty percent of the total generated on an annual basis for their contract. So in the last ten years, we've averaged around two, two point two million dollars a year in T G T. They have come forward with a one point two, one point three million dollar contract every year. Means forty percent is going somewhere else. In the future, this governing body could determine what it wants to do with the C V B, as well as the, the committee and, and director and the chamber itself. If they want to start requesting sixty-five percent to make up for the, the three hundred K, they could do that. And this commission has that authority. Either way you slice it, whether you allocate more to the C V B, or you pull this out of this project and you put something else in, it impacts another funding source, which impacts another project, impacts another area of our community. In oh nine, when we issued Star Bonds, transient guest tax were not part of it. In twenty twelve, when those hotels were built, we had to put transient guest tax into Star Bonds. For the last ten years, transient guest tax have supported Star Bonds.
What, you mean that that hasn't been going into the C V B?
It has not. Two hotels on the south end have been paying transient guest tax to Star Bonds for ten years. So there is a precedent. And it's about making visions happen. South End redevelopment was unprecedented, what happened down there. We did deals. We, we started an R F P process and it, it was halted to build those two hotels. Halted. We didn't even get to look at what other opportunities there were. I'm just bringing it up because visions are met by commissions making tough choices to bring revenue streams to the table to get those projects done. We don't go offer all those tools and incentives anywhere else in town. Aggieville and downtown have been identified for years by the governing body to structure and target different ways to fund things. And here we are isolating property and telling them, you go issue the debt, you go build the project, we'll capture the revenues you generate, and we'll give them right back to you through twenty thirty-eight.
Okay. So you're saying that those other hotels down by the Conference Center aren't contributing their fair share to the transient guest, to the Convention and Visitors Bureau Fund?
Candlewood and the Holiday Inn Express, since two thousand twelve, their transient guest tax has been diverted to Star Bond debt retirement.
Which goes to partially pay for some of the parking, the parking garage, the Conference Center, Discovery Center, everything else that's gone down there, and everything else that's happened across the, the city. So that makes a huge difference. So that argument is moot based on the fact that instead of taking the T G T and putting in the Star Bonds like we're doing down there, we're taking the T G T, put it into the TIF bonds here, that makes complete and total sense. That, I don't see how that is not, is an arguable point. We've set the precedent. The, the big thing is for me is, how are we going to pay for our half of the parking garage? We need to sign this deal before T J realizes the city's not even doing their share. We're not paying half of it over a period of, of the fifteen, thirteen years we got. And so why he's willing to do that for us, I don't know. But we need to take him up on it because otherwise, the property taxes are going up. We're going to raid Eco Devo money for, that's already spoken for in the, the improvement, what's that, infrastructure. That part, we've got a million infrastructure jobs. And we don't want to raid, that, that twenty percent of economic development funds really isn't that much once we start spending it. And if Scorpius, there is some hope I heard today that Scorpius might have some forward progress here. Yeah, I just think those funds were meant for certain things. The transient guest tax, we've set the precedent of using it for, but to pay off bonds. And otherwise, we've got to come up with money somewhere for, to pay for the city's part. We, we're not even paying for our half. And if there's ever any fairness in the world, T J would insist that we pay for our half of the parking garage, since we ask him to build the parking garage essentially. And so that's why I just think this is, it's not quite a no-brainer, because there is some issues. And the thing is, is what's best for the community isn't always what's best for any individual person. And that's something Peter and the new commissioners are going to figure out. And it's a tough call when people don't want you to do a certain thing. But what's best for the community is to do that thing, and then just try to make it up as best as possible so it doesn't affect them. But that is, that is how life goes in the Serengeti of Kansas, that not everybody is going to benefit from everything that the city does. And Aggieville has suffered needlessly for a few years now with construction and bad everything. And it's time And it's time we make it up to them and get this thing right. Go ahead.
Mark, you got a star bond that was tied into the Discovery Center. That's what is the driving force down there, which is different.
But you hate the Discovery Center.
We issued, we issued $50 million, we issued $50 million in star bonds. 17 went to Discovery Center.
Okay. But there's-
The reason of it is what generated all that infrastructure.
What generated all the infrastructure and the debt retirement is all the retail in the north end, including the Hy-Vee, which you voted for, which I appreciate that, Bear.
You needed that star bond in order to make it work, Jason.
And we need the TIF bond to make this thing work, so.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Linda, you've been awful quiet.
No, I haven't had the chance to talk yet. Have to get out of the way sometimes. I, as you know, I'm on record as not, as not supporting giving away the parking lots here in the community. And so that's been my vote. This is a parking lot that had a value of over $2 million where the proposed midtown is, and I'm not critical of the proposal, so much as I want to be a good steward of the citizens' resources. And that is property in many cases. I am, I also have tried to be protective of transient guest tax. And we haven't had, since the downtown, the Blue Earth Plaza, the downtown redevelopment, 10 years ago or 12 by now, probably, I'm not sure, we haven't even had a proposal on use of transient guest taxes. This is the first one. And I perceive that this is a precedent. I appreciate us having economic development, what we call tools in our toolbox. And this is one of those tools. And I want to be conservative with those. And I'm not eager to commit them. So my objection, as I've stated several times, if you've been listening, is I object to using the transient guest tax for concrete. I really want to use it for, as an attraction and use it, and I don't know about, I'm not saying, nobody's come forth with a real attraction, but I think we need to be attracting people throughout the community. And I'm, I'm just not supportive of spending it on a parking garage as concrete. If a developer comes forward and wants to build a hotel and a parking garage, they need to assemble the funding package to make that possible. And I think the city is, is and has been a good partner and we give some, we don't give away everything, but I am just not, I can't make myself vote for it. And I'm supportive of the project, I'm just not supportive of using the transient guest tax, committing the transient guest tax to the project.
Well, how do you suspect the city would pay for their part of it then? Do you have an idea while we could replace that? You were the one that was so excited about the city getting a parking garage without having to pay for it a month ago. This is how we do it, without rating yours and my property taxes and everything else?
Lower the temperature a little bit.
Okay. I'm just excited about this idea.
I know, and I appreciate that. I don't have a solution. I know that a developer who comes forth with a project has to have the funding put together. And I am going to encourage the future city commission to spend some time developing a policy about what to, how they want to, what their priorities are for use of the transient guest tax. This is the first time in 10 years, 12 years, that we have even considered it. This is the only project we've ever considered. And I think it bears some thought and not just pushing it through as, as one project. And I'm, we have spent, I'm just saying, we have spent, ever since I've been on the commission, we have spent so much money on the north campus corridor and all of the concrete there. We can, you know, that's where our money goes, into concrete, whether it's the roads or, and I'm not, you know, y'all complain about the potholes, heaven only knows, but I think we have to, anyway, those are my values. So I don't have a real answer for you, Mark. I don't have a, I don't have to come up with a solution for a developer. I just know that-
We just have to come up with a solution for the city's half of it. That's, that's the thing we're talking about.
No, it's not the city doesn't have-
We asked them to build, somebody to build a parking garage.
To match a developer's investment.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to say, the money that we're giving him isn't, in a sense, for his development, it's, we're giving money that's not even going to pay for the public parking, that we're going to get out of the development. Also, I think it's somewhat can be semantics. We have the north end, the money that we gave, the transient guest tax to pay for the star bonds to build for concrete. You can say, well, those hotels didn't contribute to the CVB fund, but they got the marketing, like has been said about this project. I really don't look at it that way. I'm just saying, we're deciding as a city to only spend this much money on that marketing and this much money to do these concrete things to bring people in. I think everyone's still contributing. It's just the fact that it ends up in these districts that we're taking from this group or that group. But as Jason explained, we can set those percentages to come out with the amount of money, you know, to make it work the way we want. So I don't think it really serves a point to point the finger that this hotel's going to get the benefit or this hotel's going to get it. Because we have a number of them that aren't paying it. It's really just deciding in total what we're going to spend the money on. And we have the vision for Aggieville to have these two garages. This provides us a way to get it and a way to get it quickly and get Aggieville going.
Anything else, Winn?
So this is one I've been struggling with for a couple of weeks, you know, trying to slice it to see, which goes, I want to see this project succeed. And I guess, you know, it boils down to, okay, we're having an argument over transient guest tax. What's the gain if we don't approve it?
Nothing.
You know, I'm having a hard time figuring out if there's any gain if we don't approve it, except that it would, it would put more money possibly in CVB. But when people say all of it should go there, you know, I know over the years it hasn't, as Jason pointed out. It went into different things. And in fact, if you looked at what was on the consent agenda tonight, you know, Manhattan Arts Center, I think got $45,000 worth of it because we're funding them out of transient guest tax. I think the Wolf House got $5,000. So I've always been an advocate of, you know, keeping our property tax low. And as Mark and John have pointed out, this does that. It taps into other revenue streams. And I've always been a big advocate of that, to take, you know, whether it's economic development funds or wherever else, to keep it off of the property tax rolls. And then I took a hard look at the CVB budget. I know that, you know, the group there had a discussion, they were not really 100% in favor of using the transient guest tax, but, you know, they're still getting 1.2 million, you know, every year, and they're doing a briefing here shortly. So, you know, when I look at it, you know, as I weigh it, there may be a little bit of a downsized on using that transient guest tax. But there's even a bigger downsized if I vote with Linda and say, no, that'll kill the project. And if it kills the project, then we're going to have two holes in the ground there. And so that's the dilemma. So a lot of decisions are not ones where, you know, it's clear, this is the right way to go, this is the wrong way to go. I still got mixed feelings on it, but yeah, I'm going to have to go down on the side of going for it simply because I think the alternative is worse. It's, for me, a choice between two negatives and one's worse than the other. And I agree with the sentiments, you know, Colin put out there. It does look like there may be, you know, some people would say some favoritism towards that developer, unfair competition, perhaps. But I have to, I have to agree with Mark. It's just, this is the, the best alternative of what I consider to be two not-so-great ones.
In that case?
And I'm eager for the city commission in the future to develop a policy about how to spend transient guest tax. This is the only proposal we've ever received and it doesn't have to be on hotels and parking garages. There could be legitimate transient guest tax proposals that come to this commission. And so I don't feel I'm obligated to approve something that I don't want to do. And so I'm sorry, Winn, that you do, but it's just the way it is.
See, I agree with that sentiment, but I also think that we got a statute that says how we can spend it. And as long as we're within the parameters and it's legal, we don't need a policy. We already have one. And it gives us the flexibility. And some folks may not like that, but I like broad parameters because otherwise we can't take the revenue streams and do what my primary reason for running for the commission was, is do something about property taxes. And that's where my, you know, effort has always been.
I appreciate what the chamber does about marketing Manhattan. I think there, we need to be thinking broadly. And I know that when Stampede left, we set forth a group to go think, what could we do to ever replace that? And of course, we can't replace the Stampede with one event. But we can come up with new ideas and attract people to this community. So I, I think there are other ways we can spend money to bring people here.
Go ahead, John.
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a First Amendment to Phase One Development Agreement and also Phase Two Development Agreement with Midtown Land Company LLC. Approve Resolution Number 121923-E with the intent of issuing up to $40 million for the Midtown Project Phase One and Approve Resolution Number 121923-F with the intent of issuing up to $40 million for Handy Corner Project Phase Two.
I second the motion. Please call the rule.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
No.
Mayor Hattasal?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries three to one.
Very good. Thank you. Make sure this happens. All right. On to the next item. We're going to consider the 2024 Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Fort Riley Promotion Agreements End of the Year Reports on the Joint Economic Development Fort Riley Liaison and Convention and Visitors Bureau Fourth Quarter Report.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Kristin Dolph, Assistant to the City Manager. I am going to introduce this item, speak briefly about the city's economic development report that was in, included with this packet. For the sake of brevity, I just summarized all of the companies that are under active economic development agreements with the City of Manhattan that require accountability reporting. I will be pretty quick with this overview and stand for questions if you have it, but the first four companies that you see with compliance percentages, those are the ones that are currently active. All of those companies received the incentives for this year. And I did want to note that Bev Hub hired the final 11 full-time employees under their grant, so they received their final payment for that and closed out that job incentive grant. The remaining four companies are in the beginning stages of their accountability in that the reporting hasn't started. Most of them are waiting for buildings to be constructed, but they will come on to that annual reporting in between 2024 and 2026. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight is we did enter into our first speculative industrial building IRB program agreement with Flint Hills Ventures. They did receive their building permit in December, so then construction is expected to start in 2024 and be complete in 2025. And then their abatement accountability will begin. So they are our newest addition to that. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, I will turn it over to the chamber and let them get started on their reports.
Thank you, Kristin.
You're welcome.
Brevity is king, everybody.
Well, I will try to do the same thing, Mayor Hattasal. Good evening, Commissioners. Jason Smith, President and CEO of the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Before we get into our reports, I want to echo the chorus, thanking the mayor and Commissioner Morse for your service. This is my, my fifth time presenting our year-end report. It kind of feels like our annual Christmas party, right? We have the, the end of the year. And Commissioner Morse, I'll miss you being part of that. You've been in every one of them. Very excited about the, the movement we made over the last year. You know, last year we stood up here and we had a lot of big things we were talking about. This year, not as many big things, but a lot of groundwork for some opportunities that we think are real important headed into the future. Couple of things that I want to note. We have two new staff people. You've seen them this year, but in terms of adding this year, we have two new people that will be in front of you. Marsha Rozell, who is our new Convention and Visitors Bureau Director. And we're super excited that she accepted our offer to move up. And we, of course, we miss Karen, and Karen had done this for a long time, but Marsha's hit the ground running and I think has some great things to talk to you about, as well as Christian, who is our new Military Relations Director. And when that opportunity, when that job opened, Christian was our number one target and graciously accepted our offer. And we are thrilled that she's part of our team now and has done an outstanding job. So we'll have three reports for you this evening, our economic development report, and Darren will, will lead that. He's our, obviously, our Director of Economic Development, followed by Christian Bishop, who will do our military affairs, and then Marsha Rozell, who will give you our CVB report. And then I'll come up and answer any questions as, as we talk about the contract. So with that, I will turn it over to Darren.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Again, Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development at the Manhattan Chamber. I have the honor of working with our economic development team, including at the Chamber, George Cant, who is our Business Retention and Expansion Manager, and Allison Muth, who was a new addition to our team this year back in September. She manages our talent program. So they're both joining us this evening. Appreciate all they've done. They do a lot of the, a lot of the work down in the trenches that we'll be highlighting, highlighting this evening. Just a reminder of the strategies, stuck here in between mics again. Give me a second. All right, just, just to highlight some of the strategies, again, job creation, talent retention, expansion, entrepreneurship and innovation. Over the course of this year, been recognized for some of the progress that's been made in, in these areas, recognized by Site Selection Magazine as a top metro in the country for, for economic development projects, recognized by the International Economic Development Council for a gold award for our print marketing campaign that's part of Made for Manhattan, which is the Talent Strategies Program, recognized as a bronze award, a third-place award for Economic Development Organization of the Year. Our Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership efforts were recognized by the Mid-America Economic Development Council. And then the Association of Public Land Grant Universities recognized Kansas State University with an innovative, an Innovation and Economic Prosperity Award for leading programs and initiatives that support regional economic development, one of four universities recognized. So again, don't want to take too much time on that, but it's always good to get that recognition, not why we do the work, but it's good when, when the work that's being done here is being recognized at a national level. Those along with, those items along with a number of other things that we talk about tonight are all highlighted in more detail in the printed economic development reports that you were provided. That's the same as what was provided digitally in the packet for this evening. So obviously, the May 24th event at NBAF was a major highlight of the year, finally being able to cut the ribbon. The mayor did a wonderful job there. I think most folks' sunburn has finally gone away from that day, but a great day, a great showcase for our community. And at the end of the day, the community showed incredibly well. Highlighting some other projects, Scorpius Bio Manufacturing, obviously, we've been talking about this for several years now. As the mayor alluded to, I think there is some, some progress being made. There have been some specific thresholds set with the company that they need to meet. A lot of that coming from the state, ultimately a state project. And I know that they're working really hard to meet those. We'll be updating as we can on, on how that's progressing. Bev Hub was mentioned by Kristin, the, not only their facility out by the airport where we had the, the deal with them a couple of years ago on, on job creation and capital investment. They're now leasing the full former McCall's building down on McCall's, that's significant 280,000-plus square feet of space that they're warehousing out of. So a great example of a company that comes in, support them in their initial foray into the community, and they continue to grow here. Cimarron Trailers, not in the city, but over in Potter- Uh, Cimarron Trailers over, not in the city, but over in Potawatomi County in the Green Valley Business Park, uh, this year opened up their operations. Uh, Prime Company held a ribbon cutting on the project that development incentives, uh, that we brought here, uh, last year. Uh, Radiation Detection Technologies, uh, continues to grow. They're located up on campus at K-State, but growing into a facility in Potawatomi County to the east and we continue to be engaged with them on future growth opportunities. They received some state funding through a base grant, uh, but are doing some really unique and innovative things, uh, right here in, in Manhattan. Uh, and then, uh, the, the, another one I want to highlight there, uh, Automation Controls in the city-owned KEC building. Uh, just taking, uh, some office space over there, but a company that expanded their operations to Manhattan and worked with a number of, of manufacturers in the area. See, growth continues up along the edge, uh, with the nineteen sixty project that, uh, you all considered, uh, some abatements on earlier and, and approved earlier this year. If we look at the eight, um, at the existing buildings there, eighteen eighty, Burns and McDonald opened up a, a student success center there this year. Great Plains Manufacturing, Kubota opened up, uh, some office space there. Shorepoint Ag, which are K-State grads from out in Rollins County in the Atwood area, um, opened up, uh, opened up an office here in Manhattan. So we're seeing that desire to be close to the university, the desire to be part of an innovation district driving the investment made by these companies. Uh, we mentioned the Spec Industrial Building. I really think this is something that has potential to be very impactful. Um, hopefully this is, is the first project of many in that, in that space, but thank you for your approval. A, several years ago of that, of that, uh, new, uh, program and B of this particular project. And look forward to seeing jobs created as, as that gets built. Uh, and then highlight Stormont Vale, obviously significant investment up in the edge district, um, by a major healthcare provider in the region. Uh, not just the, not just the healthcare component of it, but also the, um, partnerships with K-State and the Physicians Assistant Program. Uh, and their state-of-the-art simulator center there that's part of that Stormont Vale, uh, partnership with the university. We've talked about some of this tonight. Obviously there continues to be significant, uh, investment, uh, in the community, these major projects. Not only, um, this activity makes the community attractive, uh, also showcases a variety of different, uh, investment models that, uh, that developers are bringing to the community, uh, creates opportunities for jobs and visitors. Also shows the willingness of the city to work with, uh, developers on, on projects and, and advance those. So, uh, these catalyst investments play very well in that regard. Going to highlight a couple more, uh, key initiatives that we're working on. Uh, I think, you know, this is again, to talk about some of the work down in the weeds that our staff gets very engaged in and very involved in that, and that includes building consensus among many different partners and parties within the community. Uh, our business retention and expansion efforts, uh, the talent, uh, efforts that we do both to retain, whether it's students from, graduating from K-State or, or military transition and their families transitioning from Fort Riley. Uh, addressing childcare and, and trying to build capacity in the region, um, to provide additional childcare that directly impacts our workforce. It directly impacts the number of people that can participate in the workforce and helps address shortages there. And obviously housing, um, becomes a workforce issue, becomes a community, um, attraction issue and a community viability issue as well. Uh, on the business retention expansion front, um, a lot of kudos to George Cant. Uh, George, uh, works tirelessly in this space. Um, not only out visiting businesses, uh, currently our, our pipeline on business attraction is as large as I've ever seen it here. Uh, working with a lot of companies across the region on, on potential projects. Uh, we did some corporate headquarter and executive visits this year. Uh, went to North Carolina, met with the Haynes Brands and Champion Teamwear, um, executives there along with Potawatomi County Economic Development and our partners at the State Department of Commerce. Um, visited with the executives of Crestes Company, which formerly known as Continental Mills. They've obviously been recipients of, of city economic development, uh, funding in the past as they've grown their presence here in Manhattan. And then with Florence Corporation, another, another primary sector employer that has worked with the city in the past. Um, that was recruited here from Chicago and celebrated twenty years in Manhattan this year. So, um, again, goes to show that, uh, goes to show that that work pays dividends, not just immediately, but over the course of decades. Uh, we're obviously working with all of those companies to address their needs, whether that is to grow here, maintain their operations here or, or internally within their companies choose to make investments here. So that, that engagement's really important. Other initiatives that are part of our business retention expansion efforts include, um, broadband. We're closely with the city and, and with local and regional partners on broadband. Established a group called the, the Established Business Leaders. This group is, is a lot of, uh, business executives and engaged community citizens. Uh, they've taken on issues, whether it be, uh, hosting informational sessions about housing. They've started a, a mentorship program where they're in conjunction with Hype, our Young Professionals Program, where they are, uh, there are over, over fifty mentors signed up and they're participating in a mentorship program and there's regular meetings going on. And just really some of that core foundational work within the community that's helping build the next generation. Um, and helping, helping businesses ultimately and, and individuals ultimately succeed. And then also want to highlight, we had a, a, felt like a record number of, of local businesses. Uh, and would refer you to page twenty-three in that annual report, but, uh, where there's a listing and a bunch more pictures. But recognize the state business awards this year, whether that be at the To the Stars Business Awards or the Minority Enterprise Development Awards at the state. Um, a great number of businesses recognized at the state level with awards and, and, uh, really speaks to the, the quality of entrepreneurs, the quality of business owners and the activity that's going on in our community. Highlining a couple of things off the talent, attraction, retention front. Um, we shared the video with you mid-year, uh, that we, that we developed and are utilizing as part of those Made for Manhattan efforts. Also kicked off an inaugural MHK Summer Intern Program this year. So brought interns together that are, that are interning at various different businesses in the region. Uh, created about a two-week, um, segment, or I'm sorry, a two-month segment of programming where they had weekly events that they could go to engage. A lot of that was done in conjunction with our Young Professionals Group, Hype. Uh, with of course, the goal being that they, if you're a K-State student doing an internship, you get a little different experience than you have as maybe a K-State student during the school year um, in Manhattan, um, and that, and the interns are creating a professional network. So there's a greater likelihood that they'd be interested in staying here post-graduation if they have a job offer in Manhattan. Helps us be competitive. Uh, our diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging programs, uh, through our, our committee, DEIB Committee at the chamber, um, included, this is a picture of some state certification training, uh, that we did in conjunction with the Kansas Department of Commerce for minority, um, and women and veteran-owned businesses. So assisting businesses in that way. I mentioned Hype, our Young Professionals. They hosted an inaugural summit this year, uh, with significant, great attendance, um, to that. They also continue to host regular programming, um, increasing membership levels to almost three hundred over the course of this year and, uh, engaging across other programs of the chamber and within the community to support issues, uh, the mentorship program and, and others. So we continue to build Made for Manhattan resources, creating industry-specific materials that both we use as well as employers can utilize as their recruiting talent. Um, Allison is out at, at Career Fair. As you can see, a picture there of a veteran fair. Uh, she's working, talking to an active-duty, um, active-duty military member. Also launched a dual-career program this year, uh, working closely with Kansas State University and a number of HR professionals in the region where if you're recruiting somebody or you hire somebody and they have a spouse or partner or adult family member that needs employment in the area, they can fill out a very simple, easy-to-use online form, submit that. That then gets compiled in our office by Allison, sent back out to a network of HR professionals in the region. And they're able to look at that and reach out. If that's something they have a good, good connection, they maybe are needing to hire someone with that skillset or they're able to pass that on to somebody else in the region. Helps us, um, find jobs for those folks, um, that, uh, that come from dual-career households. And then obviously M A T C, you, y'all have heard presentations from them this year. Uh, incredible amount of work going on out there. Really excited to see the increased capacity. And we'll continue to do work on our end to ensure that, um, those opportunities are being marketed and, and we're doing what we can to get students into those programs. Uh, childcare accelerator concept, uh, this is one that, uh, about two-point-three million dollars worth of, uh, worth of funding from the Kansas Childcare Capacity Accelerator Grants earlier this year. Uh, Greater Manhattan Community Foundation just turned in a five-million-dollar grant application this week from the Kansas Children's Cabinet Capital Projects Fund, um, that would, that would help kind of complete the, the funding component of this project. Ultimately, this is a business accelerator focused around childcare. Um, so not just turning out new childcare providers, but also turning out childcare workforce, um, creating additional capacity. It's not just a one-time swing at increased capacity. It's something that's sustainable, that continues to turn out capacity in the future. So, uh, a lot of kudos to the group, uh, that grew out of the Chamber's Childcare Task Force about three years ago. There's an executive committee that has done, um, an incredible amount of work on this. And great community partners like, uh, Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, uh, Ascension Via Christie, who's, who is working with on the, on the location. Heartland Works, M A T C, uh, and the Manhattan Free Clinic that are all, all playing roles along with, along with others, um, in this project. Uh, housing strategies, this is a conversation that, uh, many of you have engaged with us on. Um, we have hosted an event, brought in some, uh, person from Dodge City at a, uh, EBL lunch earlier this fall. I know that this is on the calendar for a, a work session with the city commission in January. Um, A, thank you for, for, um, making housing and that discussion a priority. B, we look forward to engaging in that, in that conversation. And obviously from a strategy standpoint, just believe that, uh, um, doing all we can across, across a broad, um, range of housing, uh, especially in the workforce housing area of utilizing other outside, whether those be state or, or otherwise, uh, programs, um, supporting increased density in, in particular districts in the community. Um, and then, uh, as I mentioned, with some of the increased capacity at M A T C, making sure that we are pushing folks into that pipeline so that we can get additional workers in, in the construction trades. So I'm going to wrap up my portion of the, of the presentation with just a report back on something that we came and talked to you about in both March and then again in May. And that is funding for, um, entrepreneurs and small businesses. Access to capital is something that we prioritize along with a number of partners. Most of those highlighted on this, um, on this page. Um, you know, we came to you and, and requested some funding to help start, and, uh, what we were calling at that time, a community fund and then an Elevate Fund, um, which was a, a, a small loan, a micro-loan program for small businesses. Uh, you approved two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to, to go towards that cause. I'm, I'm proud to announce that that program has been launched. Um, you can go onto Spark's website, funding dot spark, uh, dot org and learn more information about, about that program and others. Uh, you'll see this, this diagram there, uh, that talks about the Elevate Fund. Um, there's more information. Jason's, um, uh, Monday Matters yesterday that goes out from the chamber has, has some more information and some links on this to learn more. But happy to announce that those, uh, the Elevate Fund has been launched, as has the Empower Fund. And the Empower Fund is a Network Kansas, uh, pilot program specifically for minority-owned businesses. Um, but they have run in a few communities around the state, started here a couple of years ago. Uh, Windock County, Topeka, Wichita, and then out in the southwest part of the county, Ford, or southwest part of the state, Ford, Finney County. They're adding Lawrence in Manhattan to that mix as the next, uh, pilots in that program. So this is, uh, a loan structure very similar to Elevate, up to fifteen thousand dollars. Um, uh, four percent interest, uh, four-year payback as opposed to three-year payback on Elevate. Um, but specifically for minority-owned businesses that cannot otherwise access capital through traditional sources. So it, it is truly taking businesses, uh, disadvantaged businesses that, that, um, need to simply establish the ability to have business credit, um, have an opportunity to grow and providing that entry-level financing tool. And so really appreciate Network Kansas's partnership on that. Um, appreciate all the folks that were recognized on the previous slide for their involvement in this. This has taken, uh, a lot of work from a lot of different directions, but, uh, uh, truly goes to show that, uh, that, uh, economic development and, and many of these things are A, a team game and, uh, and, and B, that they can, they can have an impact at a, at a very granular level in the community. So, um, with that, I just note that, that these new programs are, are both going to have a local review committee. So loan decisions will be made locally. Um, we have local partners, including Spark, that are doing the administration on them. Um, and that the loan review process is being done by the same existing loan review committee that currently does those e-community loans and those Go Kansas loans, the, the two right-hand columns of this, uh, of this table, which are existing programs within the, within our local, um, small business funding, um, offering. So with that, I would invite Sarah Siders, uh, Executive Director of Spark, to come up and talk a little bit more about some of the activity that's going on in the community within the entrepreneurial ecosystem.
Good evening. Thank you, Darren. Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. I do have a slide at the end for announcing the loans. And so, um, Darren stole my thunder a little bit. Don't appreciate that. Um, but it was a group effort, so, uh, it definitely was so many different partners coming together. And so it's just really exciting to be able to have launched that this week. Um, so as you know, uh, Spark's been contracted with the city, with the chamber to help develop entrepreneurs through training and education, connect them to resources, to community, to each other. Um, and to communicate the stories of entrepreneurs, uh, to our region and beyond. Um, and to let people know what an awesome entrepreneurial ecosystem we have here locally. And of course, we've, um, always had on our radar to add capital to one of the offerings that Spark can provide to entrepreneurs. And so we're very excited to be able to add that to our suite of services, um, here even starting this week. So just an overview of what we've been up to over this past year. We graduated two cohorts, um, in the spring and the fall, uh, totaling twenty-eight graduates, representing twenty-five businesses. Um, of those, eighty-eight percent have started operating since graduation or were operating when they started. We're focusing on that really critical first three years of launch. And so it's been very exciting to invest in these entrepreneurs who you can see right here. Um, some of those who graduated were not pictured, uh, for various reasons, but, um, we've got, we have an incredible crew of people there. Twelve percent of our graduates are already expanding operations, whether that's, um, new revenue models, um, new locations, a, a number of different opportunities have come up for them, which is very exciting. And we've really focused on creating inclusive opportunities, um, and bringing everyone to the table. And so that's looked like going out and intentionally recruiting veterans, uh, women, minority business owners into our classes and creating a really diverse experience for those entrepreneurs. So that's been really exciting to be able to offer that, um, to our community. Um, another thing that has been very important that we've had a ton of momentum around has been, uh, the community building side of what we've done through events. Uh, so Women in Entrepreneurship is a three-year-old program. And when we first started out, we were limping along in twenty-twenty-one during COVID when nobody came to events. And we sort of thought this was the worst time ever to start, um, an entrepreneur support organization that is really centered around events. But, uh, since then, we've just been very consistent. We've seen, um, over this past year, a hundred percent year-over-year engagement, uh, growth in the women in entrepreneurship community. We added two new sponsors to our sponsor list this year. We had over two-hundred-and-twenty-five in attendance at events this year. We just got done with our Women in Entrepreneurship Awards, um, which got some, uh, news coverage, which was really exciting. Uh, the Veteran Entrepreneur Meetup, one year ago, we'd hosted one of those. I had no idea that it was going to become its own five oh one C three. Uh, there's just been enormous, uh, engagement and support from the veteran business owner community and also from supporters. We are a military community and we've had some veterans saying, hey, what are you doing for veterans? And so we've been able to get behind them in that way. Um, and, and the momentum has attracted statewide attention, including the SBA. Um, they came in and hosted an SBA Veteran-Owned Business Summit, uh, with about sixty people in attendance, um, this November. And so that was really a capstone for the year, uh, going from in November of twenty-twenty-two, having about twenty people in a room, uh, and just getting started to a year later, having an SBA-hosted event and a five oh one C three foundation for those veteran entrepreneurs. They've really made, um, quite an impact, um, focusing on supporting one another through advocacy, training and community building. Um, also, we wanted to get behind, uh, creative entrepreneurs and help people who have a creative form of, of a business really develop a brand, um, and some sustainability around that. And so, uh, the Arts MHK Community was formed this year. Uh, that's an online Facebook group with about three-hundred-and-fifty people. There was also, uh, three events that were hosted and we had about a hundred and fifty people in, in attendance at those events this year. Uh, so all, uh, all together, we had about thirty-eight events focused on entrepreneurs that were hosted by Spark. Um, and our, and, um, you know, a core group of partners this year, um, resulting in over five-hundred-and-twenty-five people in attendance. So we, we really were able to engage, uh, broader groups of people. And that, that industry and interest group, uh, momentum continues to be really key for our community. Uh, so stories and news, this is critical because again, we're letting people know, not just in the area, but, um, around the region and the state and beyond, what it's like to start a business in Manhattan. And so what we get is a ton of organic sharing, uh, and engagement from these stories. Uh, so we shared thirty-eight stories this year about different entrepreneurs and, uh, reached about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand people via our, uh, social media platforms. And we doubled our visits to our website this year, um, which actually got a revamp. So, uh, there was a, there are a lot of new engagement, um, and, and more and more people are hearing the story of what it's like to start a business in the Greater Manhattan area, which has been very exciting. Part of that has been, um, an increased focus on earned media and PR. So we've been doing some intentional outreach to media outlets and getting the story out that way as well. You might have already met Natalie Barlett at, at our mid-year, uh, report. And I'm excited to report that Natalie continues to be engaged. Her business is growing. Um, and not only, uh, is it growing, she just received the Women in Entrepreneurship Women Entrepreneur Advocate of the Year Award. At the awards, uh, just last week, uh, she dove in. We literally did not know her one year ago. Um, and at the beginning of the year, she started, like so many entrepreneurs do, with an entrepreneur navigation session. Um, that one-time consultation that, that really kicks off, um, referrals to, uh, programs, courses, uh, introductions, community, you know, whatever that entrepreneur needs, they get a customized consultation through that meeting. Um, and so we were able to get her plugged in and it's been really neat to see her take off um, as she's engaged with the community in a lot of really meaningful ways. Um, and finally, um, as Darren mentioned, oh, looks like that one got pulled. Uh, but we've been working very hard on the, uh, the loan program. And so that's been very exciting to finally bring that to the community. Um, and so again, thank you all for your support. And so again, thank you all for your support, getting behind that and giving us a chance to bring that critical capital to entrepreneurs in the early stages of their businesses. I'm going to transition here now to Sheila Ellis-Glasper with Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I will be brief here with just a few slides of some updates on the work that's being done around Black Entrepreneurs of the Flint Hills. So this is our four-point plan for economic progress. And really, if you look at these four areas, this is really what we use to guide the work that we do every day with our entrepreneurs. The first one being championing access to funding for Black and economically disadvantaged entrepreneurs. And that's through a mix of access to capital through grants, loans, investment options, as well as technical assistance. And I highlight the hands-on technical assistance. It's a lot of work that the organization has been doing, not just coaching our members in business, but also helping them by actually doing. So that might look like website development. That might look like accounting support. That might look like actual referring them to other business providers that can help them with credit repair and things like that, that can really make a difference in their businesses. And as far as boosting their visibility of those businesses as well, through targeted media campaigns, as well as delivering and partnering with culturally competent business resources and training across the region and across the state and even nationally to help our members be able to really grow their businesses. And then, of course, the last one, but not least, is driving critical conversations in our region around diversity, equity, and inclusion, challenges that we're experiencing here in our region and really looking at actionable solutions when it comes to the racial wealth gap. So these are by the numbers for the organization. Really, this year, we've done a lot of work around identifying how many Black-owned businesses there are, but specifically also looking at Black, Indigenous, and people of color-owned businesses in our region. Also, when it comes to fundraising and grants, we've been working really hard to gain funding for our organization to be able to launch programming, build capacity and sustainability for the organization, as well as our Black and Bankable Program, which I'll share in the next slide. Seven of our members are now selling their products in regional retailers. Namely, Hy-Vee is one where you'll find three of our members that have end caps. So their products are very visible in Hy-Vee and expanding into other Hy-Vee stores outside of the region, as well as direct capital to minority-owned businesses. We're really proud of this work specifically. So this is a mixture of pitch dollars, as well as micro grant funding, technical assistance dollars that our organization was able to deploy to minority-owned businesses, as well as actually contracting those businesses to perform different services that the organization needs through events and services provided. And then also just looking at the economic impact of the organization and our members. We would like to see this number continue to grow. And we know that through access to capital and resources, this number can continue to grow to where we see more jobs being created by these businesses that are receiving these services, as well as coaching sessions. We've been very busy with one-to-one coaching sessions. We have several of those sessions every week where we work with entrepreneurs one-to-one. So the Black and Bankable Program was a result this year. With the help of the National League of Cities, we did receive a grant, of course, partnering with the City of Manhattan on that work. And so we had that event here in Manhattan at the K-State Alumni Center back last year. And Commissioner Morse, at the time, Mayor Morse, was there. And so this year, we hosted it in Lawrence and made it a more regional event. We are very proud to have over 100 attendees at this event, bringing together Manhattan, Lawrence, Topeka, Junction City, and Kansas City, Black and Brown entrepreneurs that all gathered to learn how to access capital in their business, how to truly understand how to scale their business, understanding the differences between debt and equity were some of the topics. We had an access to capital panel discussion that featured national banks, as well as local and regional banks like Commerce Bank, as well as US Bank, Chase Bank, the SBA Network Kansas, as well as Collab Capital, who was one of our partners through the NLC work. They have a $100 million fund for Black founders based in Atlanta. And so they have been mentors to us in this work through NLC and have been great partners for our organization as we're growing. And so this event, also, we were able to raise $20,000 worth of technical assistance grants. So the attendees that are here, that you see in these photos, they were able to get technical assistance in the realm of marketing, accounting, and credit repair, to help them to be able to actually access capital to grow their business. And we had great representation from all of the chambers, mentioning of, of course, Manhattan. You see George there with the Manhattan Chamber, as well as the Lawrence Chamber and Topeka Chamber. We're all involved with this effort. Fundraising, again, highlighting our fundraising efforts. Some of you were in attendance for our inaugural Circle of Community Gala. And so at that gala, we were able to award micro grants and recognize some businesses in our community, like Mr. Clay Taylor here, who's one of our members, who received really the first recognition and award that he's ever received in his business, he being here in Manhattan for 33 years. And so it was a great time to really recognize those entrepreneurs and also have a memorable event commemorating Black History Month here in the area. These are our grantees that were awarded this year. And we will be hosting the second gala in February. And we're moving to the Hilton Garden Inn this year. We have, we sold out of tickets a month before the event. And I had some folks that really wanted to attend that couldn't attend because we were past capacity for the space that we were in. So we're really excited that that event is growing. We did finalize our keynote presentation, who's going to be the President of the Black Wall Street Chamber of Commerce out of Tulsa, Oklahoma. And then the last thing is really what's next for the organization as we grow. And so, of course, continuing to have our fundraising efforts so that we can continue to fund our micro grant program, as well as pitch competitions, future physical space for the organization, as well as expanding our partnerships so we can serve more entrepreneurs. We will be launching our signature business training programs through Kaufman Fast Track. And that's thanks to the NLC being able to receive that grant going into next year and partnering with the city once again. We did attend the NLC Conference in Atlanta this past month, representing Manhattan. And so that was a great event where we learned a lot that we want to bring back to our region around inclusive entrepreneurship and economic development. And yeah, we're just really excited about the direction that the organization is heading in and the type of work that we've been able to accomplish. Of course, through our partners and sponsors, we would not be able to do this work without our sponsors and partners. As you can see here, the, the list is continuing to grow. I feel like every time we present this slide, there's more logos on here. And we're just really thankful for the support of the city, as well as the Manhattan Chamber and all of our partners here that you see listed that have played a role in helping the organization to grow. And that's it. Have a good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Pierce. I'm the Director of Economic and Entrepreneurial Engagement at K-State Innovation Partners. And I'm honored to be in front of you this evening to talk a little bit about what has been advancing in the innovation pillar. So you've heard a lot about the funding as you talk through entrepreneurship, but this also plays right into a lot of the innovation initiatives that we have going. So looking back at that full investment continuum, there were two funds that were really focused on K-State opportunities. And the first one, we were proud to launch this past fall called Pathway to Commercialization. This supported early-stage research on technologies that have definable and demonstratable potential commercialization. These helped put them on a pathway where they could garner additional funding to advance and eventually yield disclosures that came to a commercially viable intellectual property. This was our first round of this, so looking to continue this on, where we look to deploy up to $200,000 in grant. We received 15 highly competitive proposals to that, and of that selected four to fund. So we're very proud of this initial launch and are looking forward to how these projects will advance into something that is potentially commercially viable, that can be licensed out and be put out into the world. The second K-State focus was the Innovation Advancement Fund, which has funds available to be deployed at any time, but it's really opportunity-driven, where those opportunities are, are brought in front of a committee to provide capital to advance previously disclosed K-State-developed technologies. Right now, we have one opportunity that is really closely getting funded. They're just waiting on their matching dollars to be able to fully deploy that, those funds and one in the pipeline for hopefully early next year. So taking those technologies, that commercialization, those ideas in the university and, and creating an incentive to really push those forward and drive them into commercialization. We also engage with, with partners to form kind of catalytic partnerships in order to drive startup activity and innovation within the region. And I wanted to highlight two of these. First is Spark Labs Cultivate. It's a program out of Australia that is focused on the agri-food tech industry. They support through expertise, tools, resources, and help those entrepreneurs prototype, scale, and commercialize their products. And a lot of these companies are also looking to expand to the US. So through this partnership, we're able to leverage the resources, the expertise at K-State for those companies to engage with the university and look really long and hard at what it looks like to be in this region, located in Manhattan, to expand their footprint into the US market. The second I highlighted at our mid-year report, the Big Idea Ventures Generation Food Rural Partnership. And they really look at a university's platform of technologies that are available and look to spin up startup companies out of those technologies. But what's neat about this is that any of these funds, these startups have to locate in a rural area. So it provides a lot of opportunity to not only bring technology out of the university into the world, but also to grow rural areas and, and put those businesses there to, to locate and grow. In addition, we've been busy working to continue on building a regional bio-innovation ecosystem. This past May, if you remember, K-State announced that we were awarded an NSF Engines Development Award called Advancing Biosecurity, Biodefense, and Biom manufacturing Technologies. This really focuses, if you see on the map there, kind of on the northeast Kansas, northwest Missouri, and really to form a hub of research, education, and manufacturing in these areas. Since then, the Kansas City Inclusive Biologics Biom manufacturing was designated as a tech hub by EDA. And that aims to position a similar geographic area as a global leader in biologics and biom manufacturing. This is a really busy graphic that you see on the, on the screen here. But what we're really trying to allude to is that these are not competitive. These are complementary, where they're working together to really build out the infrastructure, workforce, research, and commercialization through these two grant opportunities and focusing on the same corridor area. It also includes involving stakeholders from higher education, private entities, government, and others working collaboratively towards this goal. So as Manhattan is a, the Manhattan region is an integral piece of these efforts, including participation from Kansas State University, Manhattan Area Technical College, the City of Manhattan, Manhattan Chamber, and others. We really are able to leverage some of the things that have come online here recently or will be soon, including the Biologics Development Module, which there's one both within NBAF and also within the BRI. And then the collaboration with Manhattan Area Technical College to create the Biom manufacturing Education and Training Center to really work on that workforce. So we're excited to continue to build this ecosystem, to grow, and look forward to the future and to what this will bring. Thank you.
All right. Thanks to Sarah, Sheila, and Stephanie for being part of our economic development presentation tonight. As you can see, there's a lot going on across, across jobs, talent, entrepreneurship, and innovation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I think they answered all of our questions already. John?
Yeah, I would just throw out, I know I've kind of mentioned it before, as we do these kind of things, and it may take some time as the programs go on, but get some metrics like the number of new businesses created, amount of sales they've generated, number of jobs that they've provided, amount of investment that's there. And then maybe highlight a few of the success stories, like they got this loan or micro thing here, they go to here, and they went here. I think that's something that would be really good. And I know MTC does a good job of how many people they train and it brings the jobs into the communities. But as we go forward, to try to work in a lot of the metrics type stuff.
I look forward to when we get to, get to report on the success stories. And actually, in our contract, that was added in for this year, you know, it was amended contract earlier this year, the contract going forward, as it encompasses that funding for the Elevate Microloan Program, does include that we'll be in to report and report on some specific metrics. Look forward to that.
All right. Very good.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for, I know, developing a lengthy kind of economic development report for the city is, is, takes a lot of work. And, but I also think that it, it, it's important that we and the community hear the work that you've been doing and see, and so we can connect the dots between the money that's given and the work that you're doing. Because it is very productive. I mean, you know, it's like anything else, you win some and you lose some. And hopefully, we're, we're busy, we're busy making wins. And so I, 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 I do appreciate the work of the chamber and the work, and I know, you know, it's not all in the limelight. And, but it, it's very important to this community.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Very good. Who's next?
Mayor Haddasol, Commissioner Morse, pleasure working with both of you in your time in commission. Next up is Christian Bishop, Manager of our Military Relations Programs.
Just want to make sure I got my driver ready. Good evening. Christian Bishop, Military Relations for the Chamber. And as Jason said, it's been an honor to work with all of you since April. So when I was hired, the purpose for Military Relations was to support the Economic Development Division by providing, as you guys can see, the consistent focus effort planning with the three main objectives of connecting businesses and community leadership, creating and welcoming the community for service members to call home and advocating on behalf of Fort Riley. Why Military Relations, as you guys know, I always have this in my PowerPoint. The economic impact to the region is $1.8 billion. And I have listed some of the top priorities of where that economic impact hits, including payroll, contract supplies, noted the $73 million for VA expenditures, and then education and healthcare. The Fort Riley population, of course, is imperative because the Fort Riley population itself is 62,000, but the metro of Manhattan is 12, 12.5 thousand. Transitioning soldiers, we will always continue to increase the number of service members calling home to Kansas. But right now, they average between 11% to 15% wanting to stay in Kansas. And I did note that family and employment are the reasons for leaving. One thing that I don't think we talk a lot about is the Operation Tempo of Fort Riley. So while we did lose a brigade here almost 10 years ago, the missions and the operation have not changed. And so making sure that Manhattan is a welcoming community for service members who spend their two years deploying and training. for service members who spend their two years deploying and training, that their family members would want to stay here and feel as part of the community. So through those three objectives, the first thing is connecting. So our monthly lunches provide a network between the Manhattan community and Fort Riley personnel to build those relationships that can strengthen the partnership and quality of life. Currently, we average about 85 attendees during our lunches, and we range in speakers, as noted, for military personnel giving updates and also community leaders. I'm excited that for 2024, as we plan, and our next speakers, that the actually Recruiting Battalion and then the National Guard, whose footprint is on the Levy Drive, have asked to speak at our Military Relations to talk about their initiatives and not only Army recruiting, but also the National Guard will talk about their upcoming mission as they will deploy in the fall of 2024. And then the other way that we connect is through the Little Apple Brigade members, who advocate for Fort Riley and the 1ID for finding ways for greater economic bonds. This fall, we had the Fall Ball, which had 86 attendees, in which 32 were Fort Riley personnel, and the rest made up of the communities. That night, we had the honor of welcoming the new Division Sergeant Major, First Brigade Command Team and Devardy Command Team, and also 97th NP. While 97th NP was not a new brigade or battalion commander, they were deployed last year. And so it was great seeing all of them welcome back. We penned four new members, and of course, shameless plug, are always looking for community leaders that want to support the military and are interested in being a Little Apple Brigade member. Linda, if you need something to do when you retire. So our spring social is in the horizon, and we are looking forward to welcoming the new Fort Riley commanders. But of course, it is not without saying goodbye as we do prepare for summer PCS season, which will include a change of command for the Garrison Command Team, and then the division, General Myers, is slated to leave. Through these connections, military members have been able to fill a part of other programs initiatives the Chamber offers, such as our Hype Program, our Business After Hours, Good Morning Manhattan, Flint Hills Regional Retreat, and our Women in Business. Creating. So as Darren mentioned, this fall, we hired Allison as the Talent Strategy Manager, and it has been great working with her. We've attended two Boots to Business sessions. And Boots to Business is part of the SBA to help provide transitioning service members and their spouses additional knowledge to pursue their entrepreneurs when they enter the civilian life. And as Sarah mentioned, with the startup of the Vetrepreneur Foundation, service members have the support and resources with other veteran entrepreneurs. Victory Welcome, the weekly platform to connect service members and families to provide resources, information, attractions in the Manhattan region. Since I've been here in April, we've actually connected with 2,500 new soldiers. It's great to work with CVB to provide them with our Visit Manhattan Guides, our Hunting and Fishing Guides, which were very hot commodities this year, our Made for Manhattan's Job Opportunities, and more. And I will note that the Visitors Guides get used and taken from the mall cart, so they are getting taken, Marsha. In addition to Made for Manhattan, we did launch the Military Connect page this past summer. This is still in its early phase, but the intent is to provide additional resources to service members, such as where to go to vote, wear vehicle registrations, animal doctors, and school information, to include the Military School Liaison. Like I said, it's been a great tool. We've worked with the Garrison Command Team to take it to Leavenworth as they were recruiting new officers to come to Manhattan. And so we just plan to work with them even more on how we can spread the word of that Fort Riley is the place to call home, and they are all made for Manhattan. And then last, I just listed some additional events and ceremonies. So this year, for Veterans Day, we had over 1,600 participants in the parade, which was actually 450 more than last year. K-State Fort Riley Day, with the partners of Briggs, K-State, and the Society of First Infantry Division, we gave away 1,100 tickets and food vouchers to soldiers, veterans, and their family members for the K-State football game. And I just want to give kudos to K-State Athletics for the amazing pregame show to include the field flag that was made up of all veterans. And then last, advocating. So this was the first time I attended AUSA in 13 years, and it was just severely, it was just alive. And it's crazy to think that probably, as Mark knows, two days before we started, there was, we were predicting a government shutdown. So many service members and contractors actually weren't planning to come there 48 hours prior. But with that, we had 41,000 people attend, 80 countries, and hundreds of civilian contractors listening to the Secretary of the Army and the Chief of Staff speak of their goals of 2024, the future of the Army as they continue to meet their recruitment numbers, and then their new initiatives. We met with Baker Donaldson and our congressional staffers. And then the end was with the social with 60 former and current 1ID soldiers and friends. And I can tell you, the overall theme, Mark was there, was just how much they miss the Fort Riley community. They kept talking, and even the Garrison Command Team talked about it this past, at the lunch, that they go to other installations, and truly, the community does not welcome them there, to include the sounds of freedom that you often hear. And so just other ways that we support and advocate, as Sarah mentioned once again, the Veterans Vetrepreneur Foundation, so Pete, Sean, and Josh, with the wrangling of Sarah's ciders, just to see them come into a 501(c), has been a remarkable thing. With the Veterans Day Summit that they hosted, listening to the resources of the SBA, VetBiz, SCORE, and other veterans networks, it will just continue to grow the mission of veterans staying here and calling home. So with that, if there's no questions, that's it.
I do have a question. You mentioned the National Guard deploying.
Yes.
Are you serious? They really are?
The battalion is set to deploy for their fiscal year, so.
Okay. Is that, that's an anomaly? That this is?
It's their, yeah, it's their slate. So it's about every three-year rotation.
Okay. All right. Do you know where they're, are they going to the?
They haven't released.
They haven't announced it? Okay. Thank you.
It's a secret. Okay. Top secret.
Tell Public Affairs announces it. They won't officially say.
Yeah. Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Marsha?
Good evening, Mayors, City Commissioners. Marsha Rozell, Director of Visit Manhattan. It has been an exciting year of transition for us at Visit Manhattan, as Jason alluded to, for me to step into the role of Director. I'm joined by my Visit Manhattan team, Jen Alley, Convention Sales Manager, and Lauren Chard, our Sports Sales Manager. We also have great support within the Chamber. It's one of those efficiencies by having all of our entities under the Chamber umbrella. I'd also like to mention Deana Huff and Allison Dahl with our Communications Team, as they help us get the word out about Manhattan. We all focus on bringing more visitors to town. I want to acknowledge and thank our 2023 Steering Committee, especially Kevin Roberts, Becky Katzenmeyer, Dave Lewis, and Brad Everett, as they are rolling off this committee at the end of the year after serving at least three years. Scott Seaborn will be our Chair for 2024, and in our next meeting, we'll have four new members. Smith Travel Research provides us with the best data on how our 13 hotel properties are doing. We just received this data yesterday, so your packet didn't include November, but our monthly occupancy for November was 49.9%. Year-to-date occupancy, as you can see, our hotel properties are performing right in line with 2019. And we have a 62% occupancy for the year-to-date. Year-to-date revenue continues to be higher than the previous years for our properties because of the increase in the average daily rate. Currently, the average daily rate for a Manhattan hotel room is $118. This is $6 up over 2022. As of November, this revenue of $31 million has resulted in $2.4 million in transient guest tax collections. This is with our rate of 7.5% here in Manhattan. AirDNA reports the year-to-date revenue for short-term rentals. We have an average of 180 properties in Manhattan. As revenue is up, the result is just over $430,000 in TGT collections. This is about 15% of the total collections by the city. The staff of Visit Manhattan has been working hard to book future business. Our team has booked 192 meetings and events with over 2,400 room nights. Estimated economic impact of those is at $12.4 million. And I know you can see there that the EEI, the Estimated Economic Impact, has remained relatively flat the previous years. And honestly, I've questioned this a lot in the last few weeks. We calculate that estimated economic impact within our database system with a formula that takes how many we believe are going to spend the night in the hotel, the number of days that the event will last, and then a spending amount that varies between conferences and sporting events. And so I've had numerous conversations with my counterparts, directors across the state, and I plan to keep digging into this information. So stay tuned, and remember, this is a transitional year for me. This table is the number of meetings held that we know of in the properties. Again, room nights are up, and EEI is down. We currently have 149 meetings booked for 2024, 2025, and 2026. We have seen a return in booking further out as opposed to just within this next year. There are numerous associations that have multiple-year contracts in Manhattan. And repeat business is always good, and conference attendees always love meeting in Manhattan. With the change in my role and bringing Lorne on in August, I know that the reporting for the number of sporting events held is less than what truly occurred, and I'm confident we'll see this rise in events for 2024. We currently have 38 sporting events booked for 2024. And as opposed to meetings, rarely do sports planners book more than just the year out. We continue to offer our complimentary Treat 'Em Right Manhattan Online Hospitality Training to our hospitality partners. We have had 70 participating businesses with 245 graduates through this program. This program provides the frontline workers with great customer service tips, especially designed to welcome visitors to Manhattan. In November, we held our inaugural Manhattan Hospitality Industry Celebration. It truly takes all of us in Manhattan to provide an outstanding visitor experience for our guests, and this industry is many of the most hardworking in the city. We awarded Sunset Zoo the Attraction of the Year, Labco Restaurant of the Year, which was a little bittersweet with its closing. Manhattan Running Company as Retail of the Year provides not only great products, but also hosts numerous running events, which brings visitors to town. And Fairfield Inn was honored with Lodging of the Year. So again, many thanks to those who work in our hospitality industry. Mayor, this one is for you. It's a highlight of some of the things that happened this last year.
One more time.
We are excited. I put on your desk our 2024 Manhattan Visitor Guide. We are highlighting Aggieville, and it's exciting to think of all that's going to happen in 2024. Commissioner Morris, you mentioned about losing country stampede and us focusing on cultural events. That is on our strategic plan and one of the to-do items that I have for 2024. We'll address that and try to recruit more festivals and events to come to Manhattan and certainly host them here. And at that time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I kept looking for the little "Welcome to" somewhere in your presentation.
You know, I think we'll always remember that with this guide.
I just think it brings a smile to everyone.
It absolutely does.
I do want to ask, though, it's kind of my question every year, and that is, I know that K-State hosts conferences too. But I don't think, some years, their numbers are included in your numbers, and some years, they aren't. And I don't see them in this time.
We try to include them. If you, in our monthly reports,
In your monthly?
You'll see the list of every conferences that we know of and work with, either servicing.
So the numbers in here include them?
The numbers in there will include them.
Good.
And so, yes, and we're constantly trying to make those relationships on campus so that we promote, tout, and provide the services.
I just think it's important for, that we see the full picture.
Absolutely.
And adding those together is important. Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks for the video. Jason?
Yep. Just a quick summary. Our three contracts are in front of you tonight. Appreciate your willingness to consider those. CVB is 60% of the TGT collections, as was referenced earlier. That's an estimate based on conversations between our office and the City Finance Department. And so that's what we estimate the 60% of the TGT will be in '24. Economic development and military affairs are flat. The economic development's been the same since 2020, when we increased that. That is, you get a dollar-for-dollar match from the private sector on that, actually a little more than a dollar. We raised about $650,000 out of the private sector to match the city contribution. On the military affairs side, that's about a $2 to 1 match, so we raise about $100,000 for your $50,000. So it's a very efficient use of dollars, and you're able to leverage those for a larger program than you would if you had to do those things yourself. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions and address any concerns that you might have.
Just curious about the 60%. And if it's 60% every year, as it goes up, $700,000 a year, the TGT goes up that much? Where, it's something the Commission can talk about in the future, about what the priorities are too.
Yeah, and I don't believe it went up that, I don't think we're predicting it's going up that much.
I don't think yours went up that.
Our increase is about 150 or 100 and some odd. So, yeah, I don't remember what the total projection increase was, but yeah.
Thank you.
And it's been 60% longer than I've been here. I don't know when, how far that goes back, but it's been that for a while.
Very good. We'll throw it open to the public. If anybody would care to comment on this Chamber of Commerce contracts and such, things you've heard, please come forward, state your name, sign in, state your address. If not, I'll close the public comment. Is there a motion? Too late. I move that we approve, receive the annual joint City Economic Development Reports and authorize City Administration to finalize, and the mayor and city clerk to execute the Fort Riley Promotion, Economic Development, and Tourism and Convention Contracts for 2024 with the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
Very good. You guys are excused. We'll move on to Item C, when we consider annexing a tract of land currently referred to as Hartford Hills Edition. John?
Okay, good evening, Mayor, members of the Commission. John Adam, Assistant Director of Community Development. The annexation area is shown here on the location map in the northwest portion of the town. This is, the proposal, of course, is to annex the ninety-one-point-eight acres to finish out the remainder of the Hartford Hill development. Here it is shown on the Future Land Use Map, and the blue line is the Urban Service Area Boundary, which was recently amended to include this area. We also updated the Future Land Use Map to reflect the Hartford Hill development. This one is pretty simple, it's serviceable, it's within, it's adjacent to the city, it's been planned for for several years. And so, whoops, that was the last slide. Planning Board recommended approval last week's meeting, and a vote of six to zero. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of staff? All right, don't go too far. We'll go ahead and throw it open for public comment, and if anybody here would like to comment on this potential annexation of land that we've been planning on annexing for ten years now. If not, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, is there a motion?
And I move that we approve first reading of an ordinance annexing approximately ninety-one-point-eight acre tract of land generally located adjacent to the northwestern boundary of the Manhattan city limits at the western terminus of Victory Drive into the city limits.
I'll second it. Go ahead, Linda, ask your question.
It's not a question.
Okay. Turn your speaker on, mic on.
It's just a comment, that this is a logical progression, an addition to our city and one of the last, I think, areas, at least for the contiguous city limits, and so it's very appropriate to, to have this. I, I did question, I get, ask Ron about the land to the west of this, and he said that the developer plans to leave it in ag, in agricultural, so just, just supporting the motion is all.
Very good. Please call the roll.
Mayor Hattasol?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right, last item, D, consider rezoning that same tract of land referred to as the Hartford Hills Edition from ag district to City of Manhattan low-density residential attached district, and a second tract of land from ag to City of Manhattan medium-density residential district.
Right, so the proposal, again, John Adam, the proposal to rezone seventy-three-point-three acres of this to low-density residential attached, which allows single-family residential and also attached residential, so like two-family duplex, that sort of thing. And then eighteen-point-six acres to RM, medium-density, allows both single-family duplex and then small-scale multifamily buildings and townhouses. Here it is on the Future Land Use Map. This color designation is RM, which is RMH, residential medium to high-density, so both those zoning designations are consistent with that. Planning Commission, or Planning Board also recommended this for approval on a vote of six-zero. I'll take any questions.
This is an area, then, that we're scheduling for higher density. Are we concerned at all about the services not being available that far out for a high-density area?
We ask.
Groceries and transportation and those kinds of things.
The...
Did the Planning Board talk about that?
No. They didn't talk about that, no. I think those sort of questions typically are when you're looking at extending your urban service area boundary, or even looking at long-range plans and adopting long-range plans. Hartford Hill was adopted in 2015, shortly after the comp plan was first, was last updated. It was supposed to be, again, twice as large as this, and it's been scaled back. So those services were already anticipated. In terms of infrastructure, I can talk about, I can say that they are prepared, they are ready to serve this area. Can't make commercial go out there.
Our utilities will serve it.
Exactly, the utilities.
Just worry.
Now, to the south of this area, and it's off of this map here, but at the intersection of Anderson and...
Kimball.
Thank you. Anderson and Kimball, that area is identified to be a resident, or a neighborhood commercial hub at some point, and there's already been some rezoning that's happened. So there would be the potential for services to be nearby.
That'd be a long walk.
Sure.
I'm not hassling anybody, I just want us to stop and think sometimes about what we're doing. I appreciate that. Thanks.
All right, thank you, John. Is there any public comment on this item? Zach, you want to, since you came down here tonight for an hour and a half?
Yeah.
State your name.
Do you want to sign in?
No, just state your name.
Okay, Zach Burton, Burton Lane Company. Just wanted to talk with you very briefly. I know everyone wants to go home tonight, but we have designated this ninety-one-point-eight acres into what we're actually going to do, and that's low to medium residential housing. We have a lot of plans that we, that we heard about from the Chamber to meet certain housing needs in our community. Tonight's not the time to talk about that, but just know that's forthcoming. We're really excited about this. It's going to offer different housing products than we have in Manhattan right now. It's going to allow us to meet the needs of the housing study that was adopted by both the Planning Board and the Commission, and so we're really eager to delve into some of those problems that have been identified and find a solution for those. And so that's what we're going to do here. Also, it provides clarity. So in a couple of weeks, you're going to hear, or maybe a month, you're going to hear from us on the Willis Edition, and a few other final plots are going to come before this body. And so what we're trying to do is to stay one step ahead of that. It allows everybody who's going to buy a lot, build a home in the Willis Edition, to know exactly what's going to be to the west of them, to know what's going to be in their backyard. We want to be really transparent with those things, to make sure people can make a buying decision on a home, they can make a buying decision on a lot, and know with confidence what's going to be there. And so right now, with the Hartford Hill Master Plan, which is no longer in existence, it allowed for some commercial, small commercial, it allowed for schools, it allowed for research and high-density residential. We're really condensing this now to just say it's just going to be low to medium-density residential, and that's going to allow us to move forward with competence, knowing that we've notified everybody exactly what it's going to be. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you guys may have as well.
I would just say that our community is anxious for housing, and we've, every opportunity, so, and different kinds. I appreciate the idea that you're going to be bringing different kinds of housing than what we have now, and I mean, I'm anxious to see what you come up with.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Since that was the applicant, we'll now open it up to public comment. If anybody else would like to come forward and comment on this rezoning, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I move that we approve the first reading of an ordinance rezoning a ninety-one-point-eight acre tract of land generally located adjacent to the northwestern boundary of the city limits at the western terminus of Victory Drive from Riley County Ag Agriculture District to City of Manhattan RLA low-density residential attached district, and, that is the longest sentence, attached district and RM, medium-density residential district, based on findings in the staff report and the recommendation by the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the motion. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That's it for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the December nineteenth, 2023 City Commission meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Mayor Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
That's a wrap. Merry Christmas.